601. I, uh, it's in Gavola said. I'll now call to order the THPRD Budget Committee Work Session for April 18th, 2024. Jessica, please take role.
Elizabeth Edwards. Chris Howard.
Here.
Harvey Minor.
Here.
Lisa Montblanco. Alfredo Moreno.
Here.
Miles Blockius.
Here.
Tina Ping.
Here.
Jerome Lee.
Yes.
Natalie Sonner.
Here.
All right, we've got a full house this evening. Um, I'm going to move us on to Agenda Item Number Two. Uh, and I'm going to open the floor to a motion to approve the February minutes as submitted. Do I have a motion?
Blue.
Do a second?
My second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? She carries. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. General Manager Doug Menke will now provide this evening's opening comments. Doug, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have two great pieces of news this evening that we printed up my talking points on one side only. I once gave a talk and it was on two sides, but it took three pages like, this is not making sense. But we figured that out, no worries. And a special welcome to Trace. That's okay, he still looks comfortable. Well, welcome this evening, a beautiful night out, and thank you for taking the time. It's an important evening for us, the Budget Committee Work Session. I really, in, in fully reviewing our proposed budget, we appreciate your time as a committee. Uh, it's a critical role because you are the voice of the public in this process. Uh, and, and of course, we'll have a testimony opportunity for the public and, uh, that's always part of the process. Um, your representation, it really makes the difference in our process. You know, we had, we had a number of questions that were asked early on and we got those out. Uh, it's simply part of the process as we move through. Uh, the anticipation is there, you know, uh, it, their solemn life should be no questions. So it's, it's appropriate, uh, to dwell into, to get clarity and understanding. Um, you'll, will have a brief reports on each department, division, then department. You'll have an opportunity to discuss those, ask questions as you please. Uh, I certainly would like to thank Jared Isaacson and Olivia Sugimura, uh, again, Accounting Manager and our, and our CFO. Uh, great work, the whole finance department. Um, really, it's, it's a task, the binder. Uh, well, when you mention the binder, you, you see certain people in the room like, yeah, talk to me about the binder. We, of course, presenting a balanced budget, uh, by law, uh, it's a requirement. Uh, it represents our district's values and priorities. You'll see that very upfront, uh, in, in the document. Uh, we, we take the time to go through that with the Board of Directors each fall and, and receive direction on reconfirming values and establishing budget priorities. And then we pay attention to those. And you'll hear that this evening from staff, staff members' reports. They will call out, uh, the places where we're speaking into our values and our budget priorities. Uh, we also have the peek into the future, uh, the importance, the value, uh, of a successful passage of our levy, uh, which is coming up, uh, May 21st. Holly will speak into that quite a bit, but the, the budget we're presenting you this evening has the levy in. And it's an important criteria. When, uh, when Jared gives some of his details, he'll, he'll show you the charts without the levy. Uh, because I think that was some of the questions we had at our last meeting in May. Uh, that'll be important to see. Uh, Holly has done a knockout job. Uh, you'll hear the details of her outreach. Uh, but again, it was always based, uh, first on the polling results, uh, that we knew we had a window. We had an opportunity there, uh, going through the process with the Board of Directors and certainly approval from the Board of Directors. Uh, that process revealed a 60% likely turnout in favor, uh, for the levy. And our responsibility was to connect, communicate and inform our district voters. And this process continues, uh, there, you know, obviously from the staff's perspective, it is informational only. Uh, the board has been active in a variety of other activities as well, including, uh, the potential of an upcoming door-to-door, uh, which will be exciting for, uh, for those individuals. Uh, we have 33 days to go. Uh, I feel very optimistic, uh, moving into this. We, we've really had a, a very unique process, uh, the fire district as well, going for a levy. We've piggybacked a great deal. We've done events together, uh, a number of times because again, uh, the services we provide are desired by our public. And that's what we keep hearing time and time again. Uh, we also have integrated, uh, within that levy proposition is a completely revamped, I was going to say updated, but completely revamped registration system for the district. It has support staff sunk in, the cost as well. Um, we dedicated funds to provide benefits to part-time employees. We've launched that program as of, I think it was March 1 on, in, in part, and then it will fully kick off July 1 with budget approval. Uh, and that's for part-time staff who are working 20 plus hours a week. And it's to enable our competitiveness with the market because the market is tough. Uh, today's paper announced that the, uh, minimum wage for the metro area, which is different than, uh, some other areas within the state, is going to be $16 an hour. And it will tell you, though, we do have positions that are minimum wage. We have also shot by minimum wage. And in some cases, it's making a difference. In some cases, it is not. It is a very competitive field. Uh, we've also included funds to activate Jenkins Estate again. Jenkins Estate has gone through a variety of transitions. Uh, COVID was a great example, but didn't do the Jenkins Estate any good from a programming perspective. So we're re-engaging on that activity. It's a very unique facility, uh, underutilized at this point, but the hope is we will activate it. It'll be of the benefit certainly of the patrons, of our customers and a lot of individuals, because it is fully developed around it now. Utilize it, is there parks on? It's a very unique site, has some wonderful trails, uh, as well. Uh, we've also increased our funding, uh, access point for financial aid program. And that's really to follow through with our commitment to focus on equity and ensure everyone has access to our district's amenities. So this evening, uh, we're going to talk about budget priority to ensure that we have a sustainable future. So Jared will be talking about the impact the levy will have and how long we can go with the levy, even considering at five years of renewal. Um, his projections are, and, and it's critical in the thought processes, we won't have to see an increase at year five. And it's all part of this process of thinking forward and forecasting wealth. Uh, certainly I will be working with the Board of Directors so we can utilize our organizational values and our budget priorities to really create that tight roadmap of how do we make it through and, and provide a great park district for our public. With that, um, I really want to, uh, congratulate the individuals that were involved in the budget process. And certainly, uh, you're going to hear a great deal, uh, with the levy effort. It is a major lift for the park district, uh, respecting informational only, but we only serve 270,000 people. And, and like Tracey, don't all though, but, uh, it's important to get out there. So let's get started. So I'm going to turn it back over to Elizabeth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now's the time when we, uh, set aside for public comment. Do we have any requests for public testimony this evening?
No.
Do you? Um, well, then we're just flying through this. Next on the agenda, um, is Communications Director Holly Thompson to provide information on the district's values and budget priorities. Holly?
Thank you, members of the Budget Committee. It is my privilege this evening to reaffirm information that I know that you already know and you're committed to. But it's really a beautiful thing that we take a moment and we root ourselves and remind ourselves of the values that guide our decision-making at THPRD and the priorities we've established in contemplating what's most important in this year's budget. And I can attest that Jared and his team do an excellent job reminding all of us as directors, as managers, as supervisors, as leaders and contributors, developing the budget for the district, that we use our budget values. We use our budget priorities as our beacon, as our guidepost to make decisions on investment, to write our narratives, to measure ourselves in our key performance indicators and to ensure that we're on track delivering the results that we should be guided by these things. So for just a moment, I want to reaffirm our values. The first is that we want to lead with equity with a special attention to racial equity. And what I can say here is that I'm so proud to be a part of THPRD that continues to center racial equity. We're doing this from a data perspective. We know that race continues to be the most important predictor of people's outcomes, their opportunity and how they are doing in society. And so by focusing on racial equity, as we also invest in all aspects and all dimensions on equity, we know we can have the greatest impact to uplift marginalized populations and ensure their access and participation in park and recreation services. And as Doug mentioned, I think you can see from what we've invested in, including an expansion of financial aid, even if the levy passes or fails, that is a true demonstration of THPRD's commitment to leading with racial equity. We are also led by our value of environmental stewardship. We are the protectors of the public's land. We are the stewards of the public's land. And it is not our land, it is not THPRD's land. We are the stewards of it for the community. And it's our responsibility to ensure that we understand our carbon footprint, that we understand our practices and that we are leaving the properties that we are so blessed with better for future generations. Our final value is our commitment to community vision. Uh, this one is so beautiful to me because it is so centered in making sure that we honor our commitment to community engagement. We took the time to ask the people that we serve what our focus and direction should be for the next 20 years. And they spoke loud and clear. And we not only did an excellent, excellent vision action plan, we were honored nationally as having the best example of public involvement in the entire United States the year that plan was completed and being the best example of diversity and inclusion in our public engagement process. What a wonderful recognition for the work that was done. And what a beautiful thing that we continue to use that community vision to ensure that we're delivering on the promise that the public asked us to focus on. Now we'll focus on what our priorities are that led up to our budget development. What I should have said about our values is that they are enduring. We don't believe our values are likely to change year over year. They're more set in our bedrock and they're foundational, but our priorities are something that we take a much closer look at year over year. And we work really hard to determine what are the most important from a fiscal perspective issues facing the budget and what should we prioritize in the development of our budget? And we ask our staff to demonstrate how the budgets they're putting forward reflect these budget priorities. So among those are first investing in employees and technology. We know that we've had some antiquated technological systems and we've been working really hard to catch up the last couple of years. And we're continuing that commitment with hopefully in 33 days, a successful passage of our operating levy that will allow us to do the work necessary to update the registration system and website, which would be so impactful for our community. We also continue to invest in our employees. As Doug mentioned, we've had to make great investments in the labor to ensure that we can attract and retain employees and keep up with labor market expectations and be able to operate the district. Because without the people and the talent, we can't do what we do. Our second, uh, budget priority is focusing on strengthening our program opportunities. Julie and Sabrina and everyone in the Recreation Division do an amazing job. It is part art and part science to constantly be evaluating how people are choosing to recreate, how that changes and making sure that we are still offering the amenities and the services that people want from a recreation perspective. And finally, the budget priority of developing and maintaining and sustaining fi- uh, financial models that will prepare us for the future. And again, our investment in the levy, the work that we are doing with our Financial Futures Team, the work that we're doing on the grant side are all great demonstrations of how we're really thinking lo- long-term for the district. We're not just planning for today's needs, but we're taking a longer view to make sure we're investing in the future and setting us, ourselves up in our organization for a long-term financial sustainability. So thank you for reviewing this with me. Now we're going to turn it over to Aisha and the planning process.
Yes, so we wanted to reiterate the process that we undertake each year, um, as we come into meetings like this. And so on the, on the slide, you see kind of where we start is from that vision, vision, mission, values, um, and our equity and inclusion statements. And that has fed into our comprehensive plan, which we adopted last spring. And that was a starting point for that plan was the award-winning vision action plan. Um, from the 20-year vision for growth in the comp plan, we then developed the strategic plan, which is intended to be more of a three-to-five-year plan. And so in that plan, we had a variety of recommendations, um, and near-term actions that we wanted to work on. And I'm really thrilled to be able to share with you that we've completed four of those items just in the last year. So then we get to the middle of the slide where you see the different functional plans that we have. We have five, we intend to have one more, which is related to facilities. And we have them for programs, parks, natural resources, trails and athletic facilities. And these documents contain things like prioritization of how we would go about developing or redeveloping these spaces, um, standards that we would use in the design and development of those places. So truly the how of what we do. And from those plans, we can then use the values that are set by their board as well as the annual readjustment of those district priorities to come up with our recommendations for what you see in the proposed budget. So those are how we intend to deliver upon the promises that we committed to in the comp plan that we heard from the community they wanted when we went through the visioning effort. So that is the, the quick version of how everything flows together and ultimately concludes in the adoption of a budget. And from that, we have our, our work plan for the year. So most of that becomes Doug's work plan, but then Doug's work plan becomes our work plans, which becomes our staff's work plans. And we all go along for the next year, doing everything we can to, to give back to the community what they have asked for. So, any questions about that? All right, we'll go to Jared.
Thank you. Um, so if I could have you open your book to the introductory section to pages 13 and 14. This slide and the next slide are really where we're going to look at this information and provide you with some contents. Like Doug had mentioned, the, the budget book has been prepared in, in recognition and in hope of a successful levy. We also wanted to show you what it could look like without a successful levy, which is that top graph. The expense line, which is the red one, didn't change between the bottom graph and the top graph. But the revenue line there in the blue on the top one showing no levy, if we didn't change how we planned to spend our money, we would spend our resources up in that, in next year and then not have enough to meet our ongoing expenses year over year. We couldn't do that. The, the law doesn't allow us to do that. We're not the federal government. So we, we have to have a balanced budget. So should the levy not pass? Um, another thing that, that Elizabeth actually emailed a question about, and I said I was going to bring it up and talk about it during our meeting, is that our second Budget Committee meeting is before the levy, before election day. We are asking you to ultimately approve the budget as it is in hopes that we pass the levy and we're good to go. Should it not pass? We will bring to the board, okay, so back up just a little bit. Budget law allows the Board of Directors to change, make changes to the approved budget before they adopt it. They can increase any line item up to 10%. They can, without going back to Budget Committee. They can decrease the budget.
Me.
Uh, without having to go back to Budget Committee. And that would be our approach. Should the levy fail, we will take to the board meeting a reduced budget where we take out the items that were specifically put in for the levy. And then per the board's direction, we would also reduce our expenditures by $5.4 million. We're going to hit things like capital. Going to take, look at things and make strategic cuts in order to meet that first year in a two-year plan of reductions to allow us to go another five years without a levy. But at the same time, as long as the levy's close in May, we're going to go back out in November. We're going to try again. We're going to adjust things. We're going to adjust our message, maybe adjust the rates. We're going to make some changes and we're going to go back out for a vote again. So that's kind of, the top is that unsuccessful levy and not making any changes to expenses, which we can't do. The bottom one shows a successful levy. As you notice, the revenue line and expense line grow at different rates. The, the red expense line grows faster. The, the bottom line is, or sorry, the bottom graph is the graph of the revenues, expenses of page 13. So that five-year projection that we build based on a very conservative approach, which Jessica, go ahead and let's go to the next slide, which that is that, that, that table. This is that five-year projection that is built conservatively. And conservatively, I mean, we put minimal increases in our revenues and our resources. And we kind of maximize where we think our expenses will go. We put in the largest increases that we think we would occur, that, that would actually happen. Is, are these expenses actually going to happen? As you look in our financials, if you're really interested, if you look at the budget to actual, you see we don't, we don't spend our full budget. Year over year, we don't spend the full budget. Now, some of that was thanks to the pandemic and there's nothing we could do about that. Uh, but even prior to the pandemic, we didn't spend our full budget. So even though we project as much as we can in expenses, that's not actually going to come to fruition. But we build it that way to, to be safe, to have that conservative effort in, in our projection. Now, there's a few lines here that I want to point out and we'll see if this, oh, it, okay. So the top line is our cash on hand and we are projecting a $25 million cash on hand beginning, that's our beginning balance for the general fund for this coming year. But as you see, that, that comes back, there it is, that line reduces year over year over year to where we're projected only $5 million carry forward out to in fiscal year 29. Now, the second line here is this, uh, reserve used. And you notice next year and, and up until fiscal year 29, it's all zeros. That amount is actually sitting down here at this bottom line, this reserve balance, where we're setting aside $3 million a year for future expenses. And based on this conservative predict, projection, we don't touch that reserve until fiscal year 29. So this is us, in a way, front-loading our, our, with the levy, front-loading our resources and accumulating them over the years to make sure we have enough resources that after five years of a levy, we don't have to ask for an increase. We don't have to go back and say, you know what, 50 cents wasn't enough, uh, we need 55. Our, my projection, based on, on this and then looking at other factors, I believe that we will be able to go 10 years without increasing any levy amount. And it could go further. As time goes on, as our actual expenses happen, as our actual revenue comes in, we can adjust that each year to see how long that 50 cents will last us. Right now, I'm projecting 10 years at least. And we'll see as time progresses how that actually works out. Uh, one other, so a few other things. And, and Sabrina will talk more about this once we get into the programs. But you may noticed that our programs and facility fees are projected, uh, we're showing a decrease in budget as to what we feel we're going to collect. We did this intentionally in that we wanted to make sure our program projections were what we felt we were actually going to collect. Uh, we do have some work coming up where we're going to reevaluate our cost recovery model. We're going to look at that intentionally again and get some outside help to have us look into that to see, is this the model that we need for the district right now and going into the future? And we're going to make adjustments to that model and figure out what is best for us, what is best for the values that we have and the direction that we as staff and, and the board want to take the district. So we've, we've made that leap this year in reducing those program fees to, to what we think we will actually collect. Sorry if I took your thunder, Sabrina.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Uh, this, this little, little red triangle here may, may catch your eye. And I thought about, will I could go in and it's, it's a, it's a kind of a function of Excel. It means I have a note in that specific cell in Excel. I left it in a way to help prompt me to say, this other resources line contains our grants. Our hope is that we spend all our grants next year. That would be great. If we can spend them all, then we got to go out and get more grants. But we don't know what grants we will get. And so for '26, our other resources excludes all grants. And that is just resources that we have on a continual basis, whether it be the rental fees for our facilities or our cell towers, locations, uh, interest and others, other resources that we do have available, uh, to the district. Um, what else do I want to talk about on this slide? Our capital line. You'll notice it goes from 13 down to three. That's us spending all of our capital money, getting all of our capital projects done. That's why, uh, and we have, we have set aside $3 million each year, uh, coming out of property taxes for ongoing capital expenditures. Um, we have a conservative contingency amount. And in fact, uh, Jessica and I were looking at this earlier today. I was curious as to when the last time we actually used contingency. And we found out that it was, the last time we used contingency funds was back in fiscal year 2008. And it was to replace a boiler that had died and it wasn't as part of the capital projects at the, at the time. Historically, we haven't touched our contingency in over 16 years. So we have a conservative contingency amount. And then we also have this reserve that we are setting aside $3 million a year for future expenses. And we're can, able to continue to utilize that until, uh, maintain that each year, setting that money aside until we actually think we will need it when we start using it, which is that line that builds from $3 million up to $12 million here at the bottom and then has a slight decrease based on the usage up above. Our ending fund balance becomes next year's beginning balance. And in this way, we show a balanced budget year over year in this, in this. And in this way, we show a balanced budget year over year in, in this projection. This line is our reserve requirement based on the operating expenses for that year. The, uh, the board policy dictates that we set aside ten percent of each year's operating expenses as a reserve. Uh, and it has, it does have language around if that reserve falls below the requirement, uh, what we need to do in the next few years to catch back up, to make sure we have that. Before we move on, are there any questions about these two slides, these two pages in the book?
No questions. Just thank you for the presentation, very clear, um, something that is very complex at first glance.
Yeah.
And so my comfort level with your level of uh, clarity and simplicity and explaining that, I feel, you know, it was high. So thank you for walking us through that. That mail makes sense.
I'll jump in and, and thank you for answering my late questions that came in last night. Appreciate you walking through the, the stories that are between the lines
Yes.
on the spreadsheet here. And thank you for also hearing, humoring my question about contingency planning because I think, you know, you prepare for the worst and you offer the best, which I think is part of what this process is. Fantastic news that we could go without increasing the levy for ten years. I, I if I had heard that, it is finally hitting and answering my gray matter. So that's exciting. Um, and I think just to call out for my colleagues, um, you know, this, the levy is going toward operations. This doesn't mean that we won't be looking at bonding in the future. Um, so just for the capital needs that we will continue to have as a district, that is something to um, be mindful of as we sort of look ahead. And then I did have one question um, around grants, which I, I always think it's a great opportunity to use other people's money um, to help support the mission of the district. And so it, does the district have grant writers and, you know, in my day job, I operate as a government relations person. So, you know, do you have any hired help on government relations? Because sometimes they can make that money back for you at the end of the day, just in working with other governments and providing enough resources. So that's my sort of, I'm, I'm not seeking work. It's not, uh, but, but sort of a gentle prompt, um, and question in that area.
With that, I'm actually going to look to Aisha to try to uncover both topics.
Yes, yes, I can. Uh, so yes, we do have an on-staff grants administrator. Her name's Lillani Garcia and she's been with us for just over a year now. Um, but we have had a position, excuse me, and we have had a position in that area um, for probably the last seven years-ish. Um, because we saw the value in bringing someone on who could dedicate their time because it was so challenging, if anyone's worked with grants that here's Grant, here's Grant, here's Grant. And so we needed someone to really kind of strategize. And so we did have a previous grant writer who did a wonderful job of developing a grant strategy, working across the district. And so um, that continues. We still have the strategy. We have a steering committee that meets regularly to evaluate all these different opportunities and um, kind of lay a groundwork for where we're seeking funds. And then our grant administrator can go out and match up grants and finding opportunities to those, those desires. So we have found that to be incredibly helpful. We were recently told that we won another grant not too long ago. So that is wonderful news. Um, and so we've definitely seen wonderful benefits from dedicating resources in that position. And then on the lobbying side, we do have a state-oriented lobbyist and a firm in Washington DC who we work with. And without the, the folks in DC, we would not have gotten the funding from Senator, uh, Congresswoman Bonamici's office that is going to allow us to do um, some wonderful shelter enhancements um, so that we can make our facilities more welcoming to people during high winds, hot winds, smoky winds. Um, so we're really looking forward to that. Um, so yes, we, we do operate both state and federally to seek out other people's money to spend.
An informal term. Yeah, thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next slide. This is a summary of the proposed general fund budget. If we are proposing a hundred and eight point six million dollars, representing a thirty point eight percent increase from the current year. Uh, the increase is driven mostly, or almost is driven by an almost seventeen point five million dollar increase in property taxes. An almost one point four million dollar increase in capital project carry forward. And an eight point one million dollar increase in cash carry forward. Next slide please. This represents our total resources for the proposed budget for the general fund at just over a hundred and eight point six million. The largest source is our general, in the general fund is the property tax revenue comprising fifty-two percent of the proposed budget totaling fifty-six point four million. The next largest resource is carry forward from the current year, which is projected at the twenty-five point three million, making up an additional twenty-nine percent of the budget. The program fees and charges are projected eleven point six million or eleven percent of the budget resources. And the remaining resources for the general fund include the grants, sponsorships and rev, revenue at six percent and other revenues at two percent. Next slide please. Here are some graphs representing our general fund expenditures uh, by division within the proposed budget. Now, the appropriations include one percent for the board of directors, fifteen percent for administration, sixteen percent for park services, twenty-nine percent for recreation services, ten percent for capital projects, and the remainder twenty-nine percent is made up of ending fund balance, contingency and reserve for future expenses, expenditures. And we will review these uh, division proposals in the upcoming slides. Next slide please. With that, we'll take a pause for any discussion that you may have.
Mr. I have a question. Do you have a sense of where this year is going to come in uh, for both revenue and expenses?
Yes. That is in the uh, mid-year budget book that we presented in February. Our, if I'm recalling things correctly, uh, our property taxes are going to come in higher than we anticipated. Interest is definitely going to come in higher than anticipated, higher interest rates. We get more money from our investments. Expenses are going to be under budget. Uh, and that, the, the combination of those led to that increase in the eight million in cash carry forward. Thanks.
John, um, I have a, a couple of comments that are like related to all the prior slides and I marked them here because this one said discussion. So this might be something I should have asked before, but um, uh, one thing I, I wanted to say was the levy awareness is really good. I go to a THPRD facility and park five, six, seven days a week and, you know, every single one, you can really see that quite well. So I, I think that's commendable. That was something that was, you know, discussed at the last meeting. So I really have seen that. I wanted to call that out. Um, the budget priorities, I, I also think that those ones are excellent. I was, I was hoping to hear about the employee um, you know, part and then the technology as well. I remember those from last year um, as well. And I was curious, are they the same, how is that, or like um, how stable are budget priorities here in your verse? Uh, you know, what a dynamic.
They're fairly stable, I think overall. I mean, uh, the interesting one like the uh, uh, investing in our employees and the technology. Well, the technology, we're, we're at the tail end. I believe I heard Jared say as early as this morning that we are going to finish the enterprise. And then of course, I think part of that transition is we're, we're moving well through there. It is, it is consistently on budget and on timeline, which has not been without challenges. Many of you know, on those processes for software or financial software updates, but, but what really was a key emphasis and for probably the last eighteen months, because the invest in our employees has been a carry forward budget priority, but that trigger point of, of recognizing we had to make a difference for the part-time staff. Because without that, we, we lose a critical tool for, you know, providing our services. So, uh, you know, I can attest to that, that, that some of them have maintained over year to year, but the emphasis has perhaps shifted a little uh, from that perspective.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah. And I, I, I just wanted to reflect that those resonated with me. Yeah, it's part of this. Thank you.
I remember at the, the mid-year meeting, there was, we talked a bit about the ice storm and the impact that that had had. Um, so just talking about the budget priorities, the sustainability aspect, the operating and financial models, how do you build the contingency for those environmental things that will continue to escalate and be unpredictable?
Well, I would say that we can approach it in a couple of different ways. You can build contingency into the budget through a contingency fee, or every year in our budget, we have roughly a hundred thousand dollars that's for emergency repairs. That line item has been overspent by quite a bit because all of the repairs that we've had associated with those winter storms are hidden in that line item. We have a large enough budget and we can put off some other things so that we end up okay. Um, but something that we need to do and what I think is really well reflected in that type of budget priority is that we're doing things like developing the climate action plan and coming up with different strategies to um, try to head off some of the impacts that we saw in this, uh, in this most recent event. So that means developing a tree health policy and coming up with strategies for how we plant new trees that are maybe going to do better in our changing climate um, so that we don't lose so many in a weather event like this. So we're taking it from a couple of different angles and just speaking on the point of how static are some of these, that was a new priority for this last fiscal year. And it had pre, prior to that been uh, long-term planning for parks, facilities, trails. And that's been a, a very important thing for us in the district, but we decided we have this immediate need to not only shore up the financial state of the district, but also to think about um, how are we caring for the district? Because that is something that we can change as well. And just an example of that is, you know, we're talking about all these new parks that are being built in North Bethany and Cooper Mountain. And um, those add to the workload of our staff. And so you add that to the staff and it's more sites. And right now, everybody's got a set of parks that they take care of. And if you add those to it, they might not be able to get to all of those in a given week. And so do we have to take a different look at that? Maybe some of the parks get a visit a week and some of the parks get fewer visits per week. And so we're trying to figure out all of that um, and trying to leverage part-time dollars and we're, so we're, that's what the whole point of that particular budget priority was about is looking at different ways to do things so that we can still have a high level of service to our community.
Thank you.
At one point, there was um, a line, I think in last meeting about the insurance and there was still a question about how much they might pay against that large storm damage, which I think you mentioned was like a million, which is way over the or a thousand. Have you heard back about how much that?
We've heard that the state was declared an emergency, um, that, that there was a disaster declaration for the state, but not yet do we know for the county. So that matters um, for the purposes of what we might be able to secure funding from. Um, and then I think our, we don't yet know what, what, if anything, might be covered through insurance. So right now, we're, we're just trying to get the sites and facilities back in use. Um, so we've got a bunch of flooring replacements to do at the STIR Center. We've got some rebuilding to do of uh, different buildings around town, but we're working on getting all that done and we're keeping great records so that we can turn those in and see what we might be able to get either at the state level, federal level, or from our insurance carrier.
So if wonderful things happen and the state and the insurance decides to cover all of it, how is that affected in the budget um, going forward?
So ultimately, uh, it becomes one of those either grants or other resources that we're able to add it to the budget that we don't have to use property taxes. Uh, so then it, it frees up that property tax money to be for other capital or for operations.
I have no expectations.
Take over a year for FEMA dollars.
I'd be surprised whenever it happens.
Hearing nothing else, we'll move on. We start out is the board of directors in the general fund. It's, it has its own section. Uh, the proposed budget for the board appropriations totals five hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars for the coming year. This includes direct costs for legal and audit services of the district as well as district memberships and training costs for the board. Next slide please. Now we go into the administration section of the general fund. Uh, the administration includes appropriations uh, for the office of the general manager, communications, human resources and finance. The proposed administrative budget is sixteen point four million. And the office of the general manager includes funding for, for, to further the district values and budget priorities, support each department's efforts and to continue to implement the vision action. That. Next slide, which I believe, oh, no, it's a, it's a pie chart. I wanted to turn it over to Holly. I was, I was. Uh, within admin, the administrative division, the appropriations are split fifty percent to communications, which, uh, one of the reasons that is so high is because it contains information services, uh, including the capital associated with, with that. Twenty-three percent to finance services, twenty-two percent for human resources and five percent for the office of the general manager. And now we'll go to the next slide and turn it over to Holly.
If you're following along in your budget binder, we are in the administration section and we are on page eight. Um, I serve as your communications director and also the department manager. So communications is a division with multiple departments in it. And also it is a department that makes sense. So the four different departments within the division are the communications department, the equity and engagement department, safety services department and information services. We've restructured our budgets this year, so um, to reflect the evolving structure of our organization. So the events team was moved into the communications department proper budget and I'll talk a little bit about the why of that. Um, and we retired the community programs budget and transitioned it to be the equity and engagement budget and nested uh, both our financial aid specialist in there and our volunteer program in there under the direction of our equity and engagement manager, Lulu Bowles, Therese Jones. So I'm going to begin tonight by talking a little bit about the communications department itself. This is the staff that encompasses uh, the folks working on our graphic design and our digital engagement. That's all of two people. So one person doing graphic design and one person doing our digital engagement. And then our community events team. And the reason events is in the communications department is because besides being a excellent team that is amazing at putting on awesome community events, I really see events as a tool. They're a tool for communicating with the public. It's amazing when people turn out for our events and we should be utilizing them to get our messaging out, to connect access, to get people in, to expand our financial aid opportunities. And also to support work across the district that needs engagement. So our planning division, our design and development division. And you can really see in the last few years, the dividends there. You know, the engagement we're getting in our park design in the north part of the district, I've had so many. I've had so many staff say, wow, the conversations are completely different because people have been involved in the design and the development. Giving input all the way because we've gone out in the community to get that input. And that's only because of the fusion of that work being supported by the events team helping make those engagement opportunities possible. So communication works on supporting district-wide public engagement efforts. We customize our outreach plans and strategy for staff and we really see ourselves. As internal communications and community engagement consultants. Ensuring the equity values of the district and our community vision values in all of the work that we do. And this past year, the workload has absolutely been dominated by the local option levy. So Jessica, we're going to flip to the next slide and then we'll come back here. And I just wanted to give y'all a quick update of what we're doing to get the word out. Thank you for your sweet comments. That's really affirming. Thirty-three days to go until May twenty-first. Ballots will be mailed out May first, so. We are in the home stretch of our public engagement plan. Altogether, we have more than a hundred and twenty speaking events, tabling at events, presentations, activities that we will have attended in support of the levy. That number's wrong and I did that slide two days ago. We're we've crossed the three thousand threshold. We were about three thousand, I think sixty-eight the last time I saw the spreadsheet. Of people we've directly interacted with and spoken to. So that's a person who attended a place where we were speaking to a group or that's a person we spoke with one-on-one. Out in the community and those direct conversations make all the difference. Your ground game in your public information world is so important. And some of those conversations have been, thank you so much. I forget to vote sometimes. Now I know I'm going to vote. You know, those reminders, getting to the persuadables. And it's really consistent with what our polling told us. People really strongly support the work the THPRD does. But they've got to be activated. They have to know that there's a local option levy. They've got to be informed and they've got to have a reason to show up. To have their voice be heard. And that's our responsibility. It's to make sure that they have that opportunity to be informed, to be aware. Where to get the information so they can make the best decision they can for themselves and their families on the ballot box. I still like saying ballot box even though we vote by mail. I kind of love school that way, I suppose. So. In my world, we call it layering. We're trying to bombard you with the same message in many different ways. Not that we're hoping any one time we show it that it penetrates, but that the layering effect. Seeing it multiple times, it's now grabbed your attention. And John, you demonstrated it grabbed your attention, right? And in this world where we all have our devices and if you're like my kids, you're like this all day and your head's down and you're barely paying attention. You know, that's why we need eight hundred and fifty signs throughout the community. That's why we need all those posters and those banners. On our properties, on the school district property. It's why we're doing all of these speaker bureaus. It's why we're communicating with all of our community-based partners. Getting the word out. We've had a really robust social media strategy. We're spending a good amount of money on paid advertisement. As well as our natural advertising that we do through our own social media channels. What I can tell you is our metrics on social media are outperforming industry debt benchmarks consistently week over week. I shared with the board directors last week. Our Google click rate is thirty-three percent. The normal Google click rate is three percent. So. Impression, I'm going to I'm going to do a Shania Twain joke. Impression, don't impress me. Impressions don't impress me much. So meaning, an impression is like the images on your screen. But if you actually click on it, that's the click rate, right? And for thirty-three percent of people who are seeing it on Google to click. That's nine hundred and eighty-five percent higher than the industry average for people to click on that. That tells you that they really care about THPRD. They're really interested. They want to know what's going on. On Facebook, we're twenty-two percent higher than the industry average for people clicking. These are really good indicators. We're also spreading our metrics. So we know who is most interested in THPRD based on like identifying factors about them. And through both of these data sets, we're on point with our polling on who we're connecting with, which is really exciting. And then we're also relying on snail mail. So if you're like me and you live in the district, you got your first postcard last week. You're going to shocker spoiler alert, you're going to get another one in a couple of weeks after those ballots are mailed. And we're just trying to remind you, trying to remind you that it's out there. And I will do the same plug I say to everyone else. We're all have the ability to help spread information and elections can be won or lost in this community. By three or four hundred votes. So if every single person in this room commits like, hey, I'm just going to inform three or four people that live in my neighborhood, that I work with, that I know. That's going to make a really big difference. So, you know, get out your phones and share our messaging on social media and that'd be a big help. But my message is. I share Doug's optimism, you know, tax sensitivity is high, people are tired of paying more in taxes. That is the only negative we're hearing. By and large, lots of gratitude, lots of understanding. And and lots of support to keep THPRD operating as it is today. No one's happy to pay more in taxes. But people seem by and large to understand and to support the needs of the district. Okay, we'll go back to that original slide. Thank you, Jessica. We were testing this. It's not fun to go back and forth and back and forth. Okay, so the work of the communications department is absolutely directed by district values and our, in this department, we spend a great deal of our energy centered on our equity and community vision values. Here are some examples of that. We coordinate interpretation and translation district-wide. We've translated over two hundred and fifty-eight documents in the last year into multiple languages. Eighty-seven percent of those have been Spanish, but other top languages that we're translating into are Arabic. Simplified and traditional Chinese, Vietnamese, Korean, Japanese, Somali, Russian, Pashto, Farsi, and Dari. Really depended upon communities that we're hearing from and what languages they need and really centralized. Around a lot of our work at Centro de Bienvenida. In graphic design and digital engagement, again, there's. Two whole bodies there. They completed over a thousand work orders in the past fiscal year. They average about eighty-three per month and think about those deliverables like summer marketing is a work order. Can you imagine all the deliverables for summer marketing? The posters, the banners, the flyers, the digital files. I put a work order could have anywhere from one to fifteen deliverables. Henry would probably tell me, Holly, you're bananas. It's more than fifteen. So. You know, those eighty-three work orders multiply that by the amount of deliverables for each web. We're lead with our rec division leaders here. We're we're like sisters on this project. On registration marketing, we did the second year of the mini camp guide, so we changed how we advertised for summer camps. We saved money by mailing out only a summer mini camp guide and getting that into the community. And then having the printed full activities guide available in the centers instead of mailing the full copy. Heard no complaints about that change in strategy and I think it's been a much better service to the community. And I really want to celebrate the work of our events team in the communications department. They led over sixty-six different community events in the past year. Fifty-six percent of thirty-seven of those events were culturally specific. And they were co-produced with community-based organizations, which takes so much work to get the events done. But it's so much more respectful, authentic, real way to do it. And it's absolutely the right strategy for us. We had over seventeen thousand people attend our community events and again, think about the nesting of information. And access that we're doing at those events. Really supporting the work of our planning, design, development, and maintenance teams. So now we're going to skip two slides and go to the equity and engagement team. So this is a new department, new-ish. We formalized it in the budget, catching up with what we've done in actuals. And it is led by Lulu Baustaris-Jones. Equity and Engagement Department focuses on ensuring that the district is strengthening our work with community-based organizations and partners. To better serve historically marginalized communities. It includes our financial aid program and our volunteer program. And one thing I want to call out under financial aid is that we have maximized every dollar for financial aid. We have historically budgeted. About three hundred and four thousand for financial aid. And this year we have overspent. We need more money for financial aid. Just a quick reminder of our history. In twenty nineteen, we did an assessment of the. At that time, the program was called the Scholarship Program. Part of that assessment was relabeling it to Financial Aid. But back in twenty nineteen and prior to that. We left half that money unspent. Half our financial aid dollars were consistently not being spent. Was that because the community didn't need it? No, it's because we weren't doing the engagement work and getting out there. To help people be aware it existed. To help people sign up and access. The Board of Directors and the Budget Committee invested in taking a part-time position full-time. To allow a person to not just process those applications, but to actually do the marketing and the support work to get people in. And that's the result. We're now spending every single dollar of our financial aid. And so. You know, the management team has agreed when we developed the budget proposal to put two hundred thousand more dollars into financial aid. If the levy is successful. And if the levy is not successful, the budget still contemplates a hundred and fifty thousand. Additional dollars for financial aid because that's how committed we are to that equity value. I really want to thank Julie and Sabrina there. It was their leadership and advocating for those additional dollars that got us over the finish line. And I think it speaks volume that we really are living our values there. Equity and Engagement also leads the Centro de Bienvenida program. With so much support from the rec division, they're right there beside them. And I want to share that this year we are projecting that Centro will help four hundred and seventy households. We helped one hundred and seventy just last week through the summer registration process. Double our numbers of where we were two years ago. So we are doubling our participation in two years. Imagine where we could be two years from now. We have filled twenty-seven hundred classes, eleven hundred and three signups just for summer. That last year, we signed up eight hundred and eighty-one through Centro. This summer, one thousand, one hundred and three. So look at these numbers growing because we're doing so much more. It has gone multilingual. So the Board of Directors, I'm looking at Tia and she's smiling, smiling because we started really focusing on Spanish speakers. But now we are absolutely multilingual, serving people speaking Arabic, Farsi, Dari, and other languages at Centro. And we've partnered with BSD. So in spring, we were able to do Centro in those elementary. And they're always, always innovating, changing and testing the Centro, which is really wonderful. I also want to highlight the work of our cultural inclusion specialist who works closely with community partners, nurturing relationships and helping people connect and learn about THPRD. And finally, in equity and engagement, I need to recognize the work of our volunteer program, which serves twenty-five hundred volunteers throughout the year. Our volunteers offered twenty-six thousand hours of service to the district at a value of about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. If you put a value to the time of what they give to the district. This month is volunteer month. So thank you to all of our volunteers. We recognized our volunteers at the Board of Directors meeting. But it makes a huge impact and it's a pipeline. It's a pipeline for employment through our RISE program. Through the Community Transition Program with BSD that was highlighted at this month's board meeting. So many wonderful things in our volunteer program. On the next slide, we'll talk about our Safety Services Department, which is led by the amazing Mark Pierce. He's right over there, mad at me for calling him out. Safety Services continues to be a really bright spot for us and Mark is an excellent leader. So they are firing on all cylinders. I'm incredibly proud of their ambassadorship approach and their numbers of keeping us safe. Out in the out in the parks, the trails and in the centers. But I'm exceptionally proud of their work on emergency management over the last couple of years. So last year, we reported to you all that we crossed the finish line and completed with Washington County and were a signatory to the county's natural hazard mitigation plan. But by doing so, it made us eligible for federal grants. This year, I'm happy to report, we signed that plan last year and this year we got our first million, almost million-dollar grant. Through Congresswoman Bonamici that Aisha already talked about. What is that grant going to do? Well, it's going to do so many things for us. It's going to provide space conditioning, so air conditioning. In the Conestoga Gym, the Cedar Hills Rep Gym, and the Tennis Center, it's going to provide air filtration. It's going to allow us to be able to provide safe sheltering to communities. But then we can also program those spaces because they've become so darn hot due to climate change, hello environmental stewardship goal. Then now we can bring kids in from the summer, cool them off and use those spaces. And this grant is not just a grant, it's a potential revenue maker for us because now that we can activate and use spaces. That are dormant due to climate change. Imagine we can also calculate the revenue capture from that. So it really proves out. The benefit of going for grants and all the multiplier effects that it can have. You can do the right thing for the community, be a place for sheltering. But then it also makes these incredible changes. Safety Services has also completed. Sixty-five different emergency management activities in the last year. They've done fifty-five training courses with staff. Many of our staff have gone through the incident command training system, so we're better organized. And better at some agency to respond to emergencies. We've continued the buddy system because of your investment in staffing to have two staffers. On call at all times in Safety Services, which is so much safer for us. And Mark has been revamping the Safe Driving Program. We had a little bit of need to revamp our Safe Driving Program. And he's done a good job redoing that program, getting training and all of us are going to be better drivers because of his efforts. They also completed intrusion panic alarm system upgrades and camera system upgrades. So, you know, they've been a little busy this past year. Finally, we'll go to our final department, Information Services. I want to acknowledge that our longtime Information Services Manager Clint Ballinger just left the district recently. But we have hired an interim IS manager who is excellent. He comes to us with. A full career of both public and private sector experience, including the last thirteen years at Waltonham County. He really understands how to manage an IS team in a government setting, so it's really wonderful. And one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to take a pause on filling that position because we want to assess the department and the needs. And make sure we're built for the future. It is a flat department. So we only have the one manager and there's no other supervisor or lead worker. And with ten employees, that's not tenable. So we've got to adjust the structure. But this department also gains if the levy passes two positions that are the only two added full-time positions in the district. Those positions enable us to be able to get moving on registration and website replacement. The second of those positions is the second help desk person. We literally have one help desk person and he works seven to four. But we're open evenings and we're open weekends. And if your stuff ain't working and you're working those days, we need to have some help to help you out. So that's what those positions are about. The IS team literally enables the work that we do throughout the whole district. You know, they take care of all of our technology needs and the big focus. Beyond the day-to-day continues to be the enterprise implementation, that is our financial software implementation. Which continues to run on time, on budget and will be done by the end of this calendar year. Many of the modules are live and the rest will be finished up in the early part of the next fiscal year. Safety and security, making sure that our networks and everything are secure continues to be number one goal of this team. They have completed multi-factor authorization and upgraded district firewalls. And we are looking to the future to see how we can restructure and set this team up for success for years to come. So with that, I will turn it over to Aisha to cover human resources.
Thank you, Holly.
Before you begin, Aisha, I did want to comment, we are working on Holly's shot. It's a process.
Actually, I'm an introvert.
All right, so I have the pleasure of sharing with you the information about the Human Resources Department and this section begins in ADM dash thirty-two. Of your proposed budget books under the HR tab. And this is another group that has a couple of departments. So. The HR department itself and then also our risk and safety group. So risk management is in that group and we'll talk about them next, but for now, the HR team is a team that has been deeply engaged in. Living our values and our budget priorities in the equity work we do and investing in our employees. This has been another year of historically low unemployment, but we have been very successful in finding quality candidates for roles across the district. But we have been very successful in finding quality candidates for roles across the district. This year, we're going to be focused on a number of new initiatives. And one of those is assessing our recruitment and selection processes and making improvements. Also supporting the work of our Welcome and Inclusion Committee and the Employee Resource Groups. We will also be facilitating additional training opportunities for staff. And we are currently in the midst of a supervisory training program. And we've offered program, our project management as well, which has been really critical for our staff. In the coming year, we also intend to bring back some baseline DEI training, which we did a few years ago. We've had new hires, we've got new staffing, and we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with regard to our DEI values. So you can see on the screen some of the things that we are doing within this. And then finally, that last bullet is preparing for our successor collective bargaining agreement. So we would traditionally start that process early in the coming year with the plans to have that new document in place by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So next slide is our Risk and Safety Group. And this department was moved into our HR department last year and continues to be a very effective way to serve our employees' holistic needs to include in the areas of employee safety and employee health benefits, protected leaves and the administration of our health insurance. We did this year have wellness events and benefit fairs in our facilities to reach out to our employees. And it also included some opportunities to cuddle bunnies and feed carrots to alpacas. So those were very good days. Risk and Safety Staff worked with HR this year to roll out initial benefits, as you heard from Doug, to our eligible part-time employees. And we do anticipate some additional benefits being rolled out July one. Training is a continuing priority. And particularly that rollout of the new hands-on, in-person driver's training that is offered in conjunction with our Safety Services Group. And then one other item of note includes management of our insurance premiums, which continue to be impacted by natural disasters, the pandemic, cyber attacks on public agencies and unrelenting liability verdicts. So we'll continue to partner with other special districts. And that work is on pooling the risk and acting on areas that we can control. That is all for Risk and Safety within HR. Back to Jared.
Let's talk about Finance. We are going to complete the Enterprise Project this year. We have successfully implemented our Phase Two A, which included general ledger, accounts payables, procurement, some procurement functions, and really got us set up. We actually went live January one. And so we've been utilizing the system for several months now. And have continued on in our project. We are now working on Grant and Project Management, Contract Management. We're soon to start Capital Assets. And we will round out the project with our Budgeting Module, which I will be super excited to see what it can do for us so that hopefully we can get some of this binder out of Excel and into the system. That would be a good thing. A lot of Excel documents. Also, Finance. One of my main focuses is to ensure that the district's pension funding policy is fully implemented. I also support the equity vision of the district and the fiscal operations and accounting and budget operations in any way that I can. For the upcoming year, there were part-time dollars that were transitioned from fiscal operations to my budget, the Finance Director Budget for a part-time finance services assistant position. With that, we'll go to Fiscal Operations on the next slide. Fiscal Operations Department is responsible for operating the operational accounting activities, including payroll, pension and retirement, accounts payable, cash receipts, as well as investment of public funds, purchasing and support of the accounting and budget functions. Going to complete that project, going to get our software. They will also support the equity vision of the district through support of the grant funding and compliance process. You know, with additional grants, we get a single audit. We're going to actually have our first single audit in several years with the project for the three outdoor restrooms that will be completed in the coming months. It's very exciting. So these grant dollars, they do allow the district to expand programming. And for our diverse community and finance ensures that our spending and documentation of that spending under the programs meet all compliance requirements. The department will also continue to develop and implement procedures in sustainability and equity in purchasing. And these procedures will emphasize, will be emphasized in our capital projects. As was mentioned previous, there were some part-time dollars that were transferred to the Finance Director Budget. Next slide is to round out Finance, we have Accounting and Budgeting. This department is responsible for the district's accounting and financial reporting, performance measurement and financial planning, budgeting, business planning and management of the district's financial data. In addition to completing our system project, our financial system project, we are going to continue to support the district's grant strategy and ensure compliance with timely reporting of grant data. And with that, we will have another pause for discussion.
One question around upcoming negotiations on your bargaining agreement. How long is that contract for? Is this every two years, every three years this comes up?
It's a three-year contract.
Thank you.
Yeah, we typically start those conversations in January. And it usually takes four to five months before we bring something back to the board for adoption. So we'll start that early in the next year.
This will be, this is related to the budget, I promise you, I'll explain. I think, hearing Holly talk about layering, this was on my mind as I read through this. I think we have an opportunity. Whether this particular spring effort of the levy is successful or not, I think I would love to see these stories that we're hearing here in this meeting, that we hear in board meetings about programs, people, all the dollar amounts that are assigned to these great things. I want to see how we can slowly scale those out to the community and share this. I mean, when people, most people love our product. I don't think they know that much about these people who we're investing so much money and resources into, whether they're here or here on the scale. I just think we have such a, so many resources here that I would love for the community who supports us, if we go out, if our levy is successful and we're back again to maintain our solid budget standing. I don't, I would love to slowly increase the amount of awareness of people have no doubt that THPRD is not, I don't know what they're spending their money on, you know, they, or, you know, they're bloated. Or, you know, I want people to have concrete stories that ties back to these allocations that they can like, you know, avatars, they can say, you know, I know that, I saw that video about the person at, you know, RAC Services or blah, 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 blah. Whoever it is, whoever these people are, Safety Services, whoever, people can grab onto and say, you know. So that's just been on my mind as a comms guy to how do we, over time, you don't do that just overnight. And there is some investment that maybe isn't currently here. So as we were looking at all of these and in this section with the communications conversation, that's been on my mind of kind of the sharing more of our why, sharing more of our, the individual stories that represent the broader narrative of why this is such a great community investment. So my two cents, forgive me if I jump from the backseat of the car and like grab the steering wheel for a second. But it's just kind of that stuff. Yeah, because I appreciate all this. And we all who are volunteering our time on these committees get to hear these these interesting stories and cool explanations of the details. And I want people in the community, more people in the community to have, to be able to connect those dots of like, yeah, we have to spend a little money here in Beaverton. But look what we get in return. Have you seen this? Have you seen that? Do you know about this? I, you know, anyway, broad budget communications that I all kind of, hopefully I wasn't completely out over my skis. That's it.
Can I, can I say something about? I love that suggestion. And I think that particularly in aquatics, you've got some real strong talent in aquatics that's been doing a great job with videos on Instagram and really telling great stories. And we absolutely need to do more of that. So one of the things we've been talking about is when we get on the other side of the levy, we've got to get out in the field, we've got to get videoing our own staff, telling their own stories and short little soundbite blips of what they're doing and get it out because that will really drum up excitement and enthusiasm. The other thing that we're doing right now, we have a, thank you Julie and Mackenzie, we have a diversified intern who is helping us with her summer marketing project. So she's looking at our registration marketing. And one of the things that I, or she's looking at how we do registration marketing and what our strengths are, where our gaps are, where we should change. And one of the things we're really looking at there are our digital marketing strategies and how we can get more contemporary and go into some spaces where we're not in. Like, you know, for me, I live washing dishes and listening to podcasts. So how do we get into some of those little fifteen-second ads and get some different like places and spaces to get our messages out in employee voices? So love your suggestion, definitely a growth opportunity for us.
Hearing nothing else, I'm going to turn it over to Aisha to talk about Park Services.
Thank you, Jared. So the Park Services Division, which is described beginning on page PSV one of your budget book, is charged with providing for the full lifecycle of parks, trails, facilities and natural areas within the district. Our proposed budgets within the division were crafted, taking into account district values of leading with equity, environmental stewardship and commitment to community vision. These values are evident in our use of our data-driven process to identify areas of the district that do not currently meet our adopted level of service standards. Within those areas, we seek to ensure more equitable access by providing new spaces and desired recreation options that were voiced by our community members in the visioning process. Some of the key efforts that are underway this year include continuing our asset management work in implementing the Climate Action Plan. And we're also going to be expanding community gardens. And so we did receive grant funding recently to add two more gleaming gardens to our portfolio. So we are going to be adding to the gardening opportunities from the five hundred and fifteen plots that we currently offer across the district. We're also going to be investing resources in the budget priority relating to developing sustainable operating and financial models in the future by working to define our system better through the use of asset management software and doing capital improvement planning based on that analysis. On the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about our appropriations. So within this division, you'll see that Maintenance Operations is the primary portion of our budget appropriations, followed by our Sustainability Department, which until just recently was referred to as our Nature and Trails Department. However, the work that we're doing both on securing grants and running that grant steering, grant steering committee and our grant strategy is now within the former Nature and Trails Group. So we wanted to change the name of that department to better reflect that it's meant to be not only the environmental piece, because nature and trails, field operations still exist within that group, but also our grant strategies, which are going to be also tied into the work we're doing with our Park Resource Analyst on asset management and better prioritization that we can analyze to develop the capital improvement plans. The rest of our budget is within the Planning, Design Development and the Park Services Director areas. And this does, it's in my area, that Park Services, the brown on the screen, you'll see that's where the district lobbying efforts are housed, where we also have staff development and training and our long-term planning efforts to deliver on district values and budget priorities that we discussed earlier. On the next slide, we can talk a little bit more about Maintenance Operations. And this is in page PSV ten of your budget books. This department really takes care of our parks and athletic facilities across the district. They manage the district's fleet program. And it also includes the specialized trade staff that care for our buildings and their critical systems, which include plumbing, mechanical, electrical, heating, cooling and ventilation systems. The key initiatives within this department include managing our capital improvement program planning process, shepherding our conversion to electric-powered components, both vehicles and equipment, and reviewing best practices as we begin to implement recommendations from that Climate Action Plan. In the next slide, you'll see more about our Sustainability Department, and that's on PSV twenty-eight. This, as I said, was previously known as the Nature and Trails Department, but we wanted that more reflective name, a little bit more broad. And so in addition to caring for our natural areas and our trails, this department's also home to our asset management work, geographic information systems analysis work and that grants administrator. The department is not just concerned about environmental, but also long-term financial sustainability within the district. So the departmental priorities within this group will be that implementation of the Climate Action Plan and participation in the Strategic Energy Management Plan, which we're doing some work in a couple of our facilities now to get them as efficient as possible. The next slide talks about our Planning Department, and that is PSV thirty-three. The Planning Staff represent our district across the county on, and the region, on long-range planning efforts. And those are, whether they're related to land use or land use transportation, these efforts ensure that our own planning efforts are reflected where they're needed to ensure access to funding. This department's also responsible for managing our system development charge program, which are the fees that are charged to development as a new development comes online. And those funds are restricted to funding the capacity improvements to our system. So they can't be used to operate parks, trails or facilities, but they can be used to create new ones. And the next slide is our Design and Development Group, and this is on PSV forty-one. As our implementation of the two thousand and eight bond has approached its completion, this group of staff members have shifted to some new activities, primarily delivering parks and trails using those system development charge funds as well as other funds like Metro's Natural Area Bond, local share dollars that came our way. And we're also completing the permanent restroom projects, leading some of our larger capital replacement projects that are funded through our general fund and working with developers on STC credit agreements, which we see a lot of in the North Bethany and South Super Mountain areas because these developers are seeing the benefit of ensuring that park and trail facilities are present when they go to sell their homes. So instead of paying STCs, they are earning credits for developing those parks and trails themselves. And once they are done and they meet our standards, we take ownership of those properties. So that concludes the information about Park Services Division. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could you talk more about the system development charges? And what is the current methodology that they're going to be reviewing? And how, how and when will those dollars be spent?
So we will have a portion of tonight's budget where we'll talk about it in terms of what we plan to do this year. And we do have a five-year plan for how we'd spend those system development charges. The methodology specifically, we'll get into how we, how we come up with charges we have. So we have a single-family rate, we have multifamily rates and we have non-residential rates. And so the methodology, it'll look at that, it'll look at different strategies we have to try and gain those funds. Something that we've tested and we want to formalize within a methodology update is the use of escrow accounts, where a developer can pay toward an escrow account the money that they would have paid in. is the use of escrow accounts where a developer can pay toward an escrow account the money that they would have paid in SDCs. And it sits and then those funds can be granted back to them when we take on the property. So we've trialed it. We think it's working. We want it to be more formalized. And so that's something that we want to look at with regard to the system development charges. So we will talk about system development charges later on. We, we use the parks functional plan to give us that prioritization criteria to help us map out when we're going to develop certain areas. And so, you know, it's based on our, our grasp analysis, which tells us, you know, whether an area is well-served for parks or whether there's a gap. So if there's a gap, that might be an area we look to first. So we can, we can answer some more questions for you when we get to that portion, if that's okay. Great. Moving right along, I think we're going to Recreation Services.
All right. Well, good evening. I'm Julie Rocha. I'm the Sports and Inclusion Director and along with Sabrina Taylor Schmidt, the Recreation and Aquatic Director, we make a Rec Services Division. Our division includes aquatics, recreation, sports, nature, fitness, as Doug mentioned, the Jenkins Estate and Adaptive and Inclusion Services. We provide a broad range of programs and special events to that serve our diverse community and provide health and wellness opportunities. As you can see up here and in your binders, we have a large appropriation and Sabrina will get into that later. But I want to highlight some of the things that we've been doing in our division over the last year. The division is very excited. We have reopened all of our facilities. Although some of them may be at limited hours or different hours, we've had to change the way that we program and serve folks just based on the needs that have changed that we've seen through the pandemic. So really excited about that. The centers had offered several free cultural events and just to name a few, Pecanios Naturalist, we had the Mayan Art Festival, we had Dia de los Muertos, we had the Black History Mobile Museum. We had Arabic American Heritage Month, and then we did a Vietnamese-American Veterans Event. We also had an event at the Senior Center where we had a group come in to make blankets and hand those out. And so it's just really trying to reach the community and do different events to bring folks in. So we're really excited about that and expanding those offers, working with Holly's group, just to make those connections with folks in the community. Letting them know that we're not just inviting them in, that we're welcoming and that we're providing safe spaces. We also in aquatics offered 50% of swim lessons to financial aid recipients for free. We had a Splash for Life campaign that we did and in conjunction with our foundation, we were able to offer 482 free swim lessons. Those included folks that were in, that did them last summer. And then we piloted two of our thrive programs, Conestoga and the Athletic Center to provide free programs to those participants in that program. So really excited about being able to provide that life skill to our community. We've talked about it and Holly gave us a shout out, but we expanded our new, which is our nature experience and training workforce internship program, as well as our diversify internship program. We were able to expand those offerings because we were awarded grants last summer and we were able to get several folks in. We had a great reception where Doug came to their, you know, kind of send off and he was a celebrity, I have to say. Everybody. They didn't want to picture with me. I'm just saying that. So.
All the portion where I was asked to, I thought, help take a photo of them. I don't know why they asked me. Lo and behold, no, no, we want you in the photo.
So that program has been very exciting. We're very excited to continue that and to offer paid internship opportunities for folks to learn what we do in Park and Rec. It's not just, you know, mowing the lawn or, or teaching a class, but it's actually what is going on behind the scenes. You know, how are we doing that, that analysis of, of registration and whatnot? So it's very exciting. Adaptive and Inclusion Services started offering space at Central Benvenido this year. Our staff came up and said, why are we not providing it to families who have children or that experience disabilities? So we were able to allow personalized and priority registration to those participants that experience disabilities. It's been very successful. We've been kind of trying to build over the last two registrations to get folks involved. The division also updated our program's functional plan, part of the THPRD strategic plan, Play for Everyone. And then we've just created and so excited a senior program analysis position within Rec Division to help us with those financial futures and start looking at, you know, our, our key performance indicators and how we can be better in serving our patrons. And I'm going to turn it over to Sabrina and she's going to dive into our numbers a little bit more.
Next slide, Jessica. So this is our appropriations divided out by our departments. And my name is Sabrina Taylor Schmidt and I am the Recreation and Aquatics Director, the other half of Rec Services. As you can see, it's divided up out here by Recreation, Sports and Inclusion Services, Aquatics, Building Maintenance Coordination and the Office of the Recreation Directors. Within their Office of the Recreation Directors is where Financial Aid sits, as well as the new Senior Operation Analyst that Julie mentioned that will be coming on board actually next month. As we're really excited to bring, bring that person on board to help us with some of the work that Jared mentioned, looking at our cost recovery and some of these larger projects that we'll be tackling over the next few years probably, but definitely in the next year. Well, we'll go on to the next slide. This is where Jared tried to jump the gun on me to talk about a little bit about revenue. This year, but this year's budget does reflect lower revenue targets. As you can see, we spent a lot of time rightsizing our budgets this year with realistic targets. The last four years, we've been working in, you've heard us say revised operating plans. This year, we have adjusted both expenditure and revenue targets to reflect what we think is more of a stabilized operation with realistic growth, growth projections. And so this, this slide that Jared produced for me really made me happy when I saw it because I think it really shows a realistic revenue targets for you. You can see what we did, how we closed out 22, 23 and what we're proposing for 24, 25, I think is a really realistic revenue targets with all of our centers open. So as he mentioned, we tend to be very conservative, conservative on our projections because we don't want to get so far, as I like to say, over our skis on things when we're talking about revenue. But I think this is something that we can do and then help him forecast in the future as he does those longer projections. Next slide, please. We're going to go to page RSV 50 in our budget and take a closer look at the Recreation Department specifically, their budget. In the Recreation Department, we're going to continue to partner, as Holly mentioned, the Welcoming Center. And this is focuses on providing exceptional customer engagement, coordinating with communications, the quarterly registration process and supporting the bilingual events through Cetro. I'll get better at it someday. I know I will with practice. THPRD will also continue to offer free events and programs created with and for community members celebrating our diverse cultural cultures found within our district and including monthly programs and activities in our centers. Each quarters, these recreation facilities provide over 500 diverse recreation programs, fitness classes, special events, preschool and after-school programs. THPRD will continue to partner with the Beaverton School District for free and reduced lunch programs and our supper program for our after-school program sites. This provides thousands of meals for, for children's within our community. We will continue to engage our Thrive students from BSD schools with a monthly program themes that reflect our commitment to learning about race, culture and diversity, as well as instructions on providing services to our community. Our Nature Center will continue to host field trips, field trip programs for the Nature Center, Cooper Mountain Park and other THPRD parks and natural areas for Title One or Free and Reduced School Lunch BSD Schools. THPRD with the support of the State of Oregon Youth Solution Grants will continue to host the Black and Green Fellowship Program, a paid workforce training experience to connect 12 BSD high school students to health and wellness at our nature park. We'll continue to focus on programming and strength opportunities. Example, our cross-country and track and field program at Cedar Hills. This works with Beaverton School District students who work towards increasing school involved, schools involved and creates opportunities for students to participate at a state level and state level competition. 12 to Hills Nature Center will continue opportunities with their Nature Mobile. This provides free mobile programs that provide hand-on interactive nature programs. And then we'll also continue to invest in ways and technology. The Recreation Centers will continue our teen-focused realizing interest through service experience, Rise Volunteer Program, working closely with our volunteer service program. Rise is a youth leadership program where teens support classes, camps and events and gain valuable workforce development skills and experiences. Next slide, please. We're going to jump into the deep end here with aquatics. If you want to go to RSV 10 in your book. As Julie mentioned, we'll continue to prioritize creative space in our financial aid program for our swim lesson program. And we'll continue to expand our adaptive offerings and our Learn to Swim classes and for English language learners. We're also continuing to expand our Women's Only in Century Swims. We will provide one lifeguard, at least one lifeguarding course continuously, which helps improve our staffing levels. We are partnering with the Arab House on Women's Only Swims. And we, we have this great program that's really helped, really shown to help improve our workforce by reducing barriers to employment with our Earn to Learn Lifeguard Program, where you can come in and get paid to learn the skills necessary to become a lifeguard. And you can become certified to be that lifeguard and then join our great team at THPRD. We'll continue to develop sustainable operating and financial models for the future by implementing the district comprehensive and strategic plans to reflect the needs of aquatic facilities and programs. By updating the agreements with our affiliate and aquatic clubs and pool spaces, these agreements will address both fees for, paid for the aquatic facilities as well as the dryland training center. We'll also continue to strengthen programming and programming opportunities. By, what are we going to do? We're going to just continue to expand our our swim lesson training program. We have our staff done a fantastic job at rolling out our own THPRD branded swim lesson program seamlessly in the last two years, as well as a staff training program. We have stepped away from the American Red Cross Learn to Swim Program and I don't even think a customer even knew we did it. And it is a great way for us to continue in-house training and teaching staff, teaching people to swim, as well as teaching our staff how to teach swimming, which has been a really amazing program. So this allows us to expand our swim lesson offering and by having it be in-house, we've been able to train quicker and expand our swim lessons offering after coming out of COVID much quicker than being with the American Red Cross. Next slide, please. Also within Rec and Aquatics is the Building Maintenance Coordination, and this helps set district, district-wide standards within our facilities and they help with that training as well as with our pool operators and our building techs. They help with the operating budgets and help work closely with Aisha's team on capital projects. This year, they will work on upgrading, upgrading the chemical controls of all of our aquatic centers. And they also will help with the weight room equipment at Conestoga. And they will also really focus on removing the barriers within the facilities that can help improve access to such things as bathrooms, restrooms, classrooms and facilities. And really exciting, we're going to be installing new fire alarm panels at many of our district facilities, which will make them all safe. And last but not least, the main circulation pump at our aquatic center will need to be replaced this year. So we'll be working on that as well. I'm happy to kick it back to Julie and it will be in the sports court.
If you're following along, it'll be section RSV 30. I forgot that earlier. The Sports and Inclusion Department includes the Athletic Center, the Babette Hornstein Tennis Center, the Elsie Stur Center, Garden Home Rec Center, Jenkins Estate, Districtwide Fitness and Adaptive and Inclusion Services. As you can see up there, we went through a large reaffiliation of our sports affiliate users. Over this last year, we have gone through our first cycle of working with all of them on the reaffiliation process. We were able to actually even add a few new affiliates through that process. That was part of some of the feedback that we had heard from the community. And we are just starting, Sabrina mentioned, kicking off the aquatics reaffiliation cycle. They're very exciting. The Athletic Center will start offering boys volleyball clinics this spring. The Oregon School Activities Association is now recognizing boys volleyball as an emerging sport and it's growing very fast. We hope to see if we have interest and then if we do, maybe we'll be able to launch a spring in the future league. The Athletic Center is also partnering with Beaverton Together to host a fall pickleball tournament. We have 32 plus middle school teams that are going to come together from the Beaverton School District to play pickleball. And it's one of our fastest growing sports from all ages. So we're really excited about that. Our tennis center is implementing a new reservation system called Court Reserve. This is to improve our users' interaction when reserving a tennis or a pickleball court. It'll be a nice addition for us. We have also started to do reservations on some of our outdoor pickleball courts at Cedar Hills Park and at Raleigh Park. We're working closely with Holly's team to get that hopefully up and running by July 1st. So we're very excited. And that hopefully will bring in better revenues. So when somebody cancels on a court, you can get on alert and that next person can maybe grab that for as it how it works now, they don't, we don't have that alert system. So we're really hoping that it'll help with our revenue and being able to fill courts quickly. The tennis center is also partnering with the United States Tennis Association and an organization called Pickleball is Great to host several tournaments throughout the summer at our facilities. So really excited about that revenue exposure to our facilities and bringing more people into play. This year, Garden Home was focusing on continuing some DIA events at the facility. Their goal is to continue to add new cultural events to their annual offerings. Those of you who do not have plans on April 27th, we're bringing back our Mahaba event at 11:00 AM at Garden Home. It's a wonderful event. So if you have time, I'd suggest that you come out and visit and there's delicious, delicious food. The Garden Home also oversees the Mobile Rec Program. The goal this year is to increase to two new partners, partner locations and offer rec programming. We're really focusing on trying to get out to the immigrant families in our community that may not be coming to our rec centers, may not have access to come. And so really working with our partners to expand that offering to get out. We are also working, as you can see up there, to do some summer camps through our Rec Mobile Program. Our fitness team is replacing the weight equipment at Conestoga Rec and Aquatic Center through our annual capital replacement plan. The equipment that we have there and at the Stur Center is no longer being able to be serviced. Parts and stuff are, are going away. And so what our fitness team did is they went out and they tested a bunch of equipment to make sure that it was adaptive and that it would serve a diverse body type. We get that concern that, you know, some equipment doesn't serve all types. So we're really excited to get that program and that weight equipment replaced this summer sometime. Stur Center is introducing new programs to the center and its patrons. We're really trying to prioritize the wellbeing with that for center being closed for so long and reopening. And we've just gradually been increasing our program. We're really focusing on our seven dimensions of wellness. Just making sure that it's that whole body that is getting able to be programs that we offer, whether that's chair fitness or arts or whatnot. And other exciting is that we were able to expand our hours Monday and Wednesday until 6:00 PM. We're testing it to see if these increased hours will actually bring folks into the facility. And what our staff was doing is trying to do innovative programs that are a little bit different. A great idea is to do themed party rentals. Like you could have your birthday party at the Stur Center if you'd like Monday and Wednesday till six. And they're bringing in new drop-in programs. They're trying to do some gardening, dance classes and a lot of cultural specific offerings. So really excited to see how that goes. And if that goes well, then we can look at expanding hours in the future. Next slide. Adaptive and Inclusion Services. So something that's really excited is this year, we've actually pulled Adaptive and Inclusion Services out of the Athletic Center budget. For many years, it's always been tied to a facility. And the reason that we wanted to do that is to make it a standalone budget. We had Camp Rivendell as a standalone budget, but we had Adaptive and Inclusion Services, which is our one-on-one support in our therapeutic classes in a facility. So we pulled those all together this year. And this will allow us to understand the subsidy levels of that program and how we can seek additional funds through grants to continue to support the program. and how we can seek additional funds through grants to continue to support the program. The Adaptive Rec Mobile, so we have an Adaptive Rec Mobile that goes out and will maintain engagements with the disability community and agencies to provide free recreational opportunities. The plan is to increase those outreaches to do two additional ones a month. So whether that's partnering with the events that are going on, or partnering with the disability community, our partners like FACT Oregon or Autism Society to go and to be able to grow that program. Staff is also expanding our therapeutic rec programs at the Stur Center. Now with us being open later on Wednesdays and Mondays, they're able to expand that programming and offer it to a wider range of individuals. Right now, it's typically adult. We're trying to expand that to see if we can get some of the teens and some of the younger folks into that programming. We have a very popular Thursday night All-Star basketball program that is hosted at the Athletic Center. Every Thursday, folks come in, and we do drop in basketball. They have jerseys. We have staff that referee the games. We've partnered with Special Olympics and Adaptive Sports Northwest. We also have a wheelchair basketball component. And a few weeks ago, we hosted the Special Olympics basketball tournament and filled up the entire facility. So really excited about our partnerships and just continuing to offer drop-in programs for folks. This year, Camp Rivendell is implementing changes to the camp structure to enhance experience for both campers and staff. This year, we're going to divide the groups into smaller age groups instead of a wider-range group. So they're going to do three weeks dedicated to the six to 12-year-olds, and then they're going to do another three weeks dedicated to that 13 to 20-year-olds. We allow folks to come up until they're 20 years old, and that'll just provide a unique, smaller experience. And Camp Rivendell is very excited to re-induce field trips this year, the first time since the pandemic. We're partnering with Harmon Swim Center. They've been fantastic about their adaptive programming, and we're going to be able to take our campers swimming at that facility. So it's just really a nice partnership working within our division to support each other. So really excited about that. Next slide. Well, that stole my thunder a little bit, but we're excited to bring Jenkins Estate back into the programming. We haven't really had staff up there for several years. I can't even remember. It's been, yeah, I was going to say 11 years. And so we're really excited to bring back some of the favorite events that have happened in the past. We really want to focus on our corporate rentals for meetings, business retreats, and create a new annual event to raise awareness of the estate. This year, it includes two full-time, two-year, limited-duration positions. That staff will be dedicated just for resources to look at programming, what we can do with the space, and they'll should do those rentals, and just bring awareness of the beauty that we have. We have the stables. We have the house. We have the beautiful gardens that are on the property. We have the preschool that is in the gatehouse, and then we also have Camp Rivendell. We do a lot of shelter rentals as well, so we really wanted to bring awareness and try to build some new revenue and bring folks to the facility. We are also adding one full-time maintenance deck who will focus on maintaining the estates and then ensuring the long-term quality. He's been out there shining those floors. We had closets that had a lot of things. The basement had some scary scarecrows. Haunted House may be coming soon to the Jenkins Estate. We also will continue our contract with Reedville Catering to host weddings and large events. So what we're doing with that is anything that's longer than six hours, they take on. So they're doing weddings up there, and then on the weekends that they don't have weddings, or they're double booked, and they can't do a wedding here and somewhere else, then we'll be able to program that space. It's a good partnership. And to kick that off, we're co-producing the Mother's Day brunch at the Jenkins Estate on May 12th. So if all you mothers are interested to go and check that out, we're very excited to see what the future brings. And now we have questions for Sabrina and I.
Coming out of the pandemic, there was a lifeguard shortage. Is that done?
I don't think it'll ever be done. It's a conversation I have with my staff always. It's just that we're still climbing the hill. It's not necessarily as steep of a mountain as it was, but it's still a hill. The nature of the staffing, you know, you have to know how to swim to do the job. And the age bracket of the lifeguard is an interesting thing. You know, you start at 16, and then you go to about 22, 23, and then we have some that are a little bit longer, so there's just a constant turnover in those positions. I'm really excited to see where the part-time benefits go with this position. I'm hoping that'll help carry and have some longevity with the position, so we have a little bit longer. I have been, I personally was a lifeguard from when I was 15 just a few years ago, and I've been running swim centers for over 20 years. I've never not needed more lifeguards. Every time I was running a pool, I could use more lifeguards. So it's kind of, that's the coaching I've told my staff now, is like, when you think you're done, hire 10 more. Because that's just the nature of the business, but it is better. It's way better than, I feel way better about it now. If you ask my staff, though, they're freaking out right now. They're like, oh my God, what are we going to do with the summer? It's way better than it is, than it was last year. They just don't remember. They've already forgotten. So it is just always going to be an uphill battle.
More of like a historical.
How old are your kids right now? How many more years we got?
Yeah, I have three.
Okay, so in like five more years, let's talk it, and we'll get them junior guard, and we'll get them the program, and we'll get going. Because that's the kind of motivation I like. We want to give them the junior guard program, and then we want them to be lifeguards. You know, we start them young, so, yeah.
That's why Trace and I get along so well. I'm pretty offered in my job.
Julie, I have a question about that catering contract. So you said we only use them if the event is six hours or more. Are we allowing food for people to bring in their own foods? Because I'm just thinking of like diverse communities and stuff who would want to host and use our space.
Yeah, so that's part of the contract. When we're doing those events, we don't have to use them, and we are forcing folks to use them, so they can bring in their own food, but it is an option. Those events that tend to be longer, we've been kicking them out to Reedville. So Reedville's actually had that contract for, this is their third year, I believe, out there. And so when we met with them saying that we were going to program, they were very excited, just because that helps them as well, right? Bring in more awareness to the venue. So if you want to have a meeting there, let me know, and we can rent you some space. If there are no more questions for us, I'll turn it back to Jared.
At this point, we've been going for two hours. I'd like to see if you'd like to take a five-minute break, use restroom, get some more water, get some more food if you want, or do you want to continue and plow on and get through this?
Break.
Break.
Stand at ease.
Think about a five-minute break.
Stamp, right?
Yeah.
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 Nice one for points up top.
I'm sure you're gonna be with it.
I'll wait for you.
It's not about.
Yeah.
It's a big time.
No, so.
Yeah.
I have to tell all the family stories.
Yeah.
Hey. We're all back.
Thank you.
So we'll get back to it. Um, this next part, we're gonna jump around a little bit. I'm gonna take a couple of slides where I talk about some other funds. And then we're gonna turn it over to Aisha and Aisha will go back through the general fund capital and then the other uh capital related funds. And that'll wrap us up for the night. So uh the debt service fund is fourth to last tab in the book. Now, the debt service fund accounts for the annual property tax revenue and the annual debt service payments on our general obligation debt. Uh this debt was approved by the voters to be repaid out of designated additional property tax levy. This was our hundred million dollar bond from two thousand eight, which we have thirty four million dollars of outstanding debt left. Um, the levy amount is is set based on the annual debt service payment required and the rate is determined based on the total assessed value. So the total levy amount needed for this coming years, this coming year is eight point five million uh based on our projected growth and assessed value. Uh, this was will result in a tax rate of about twenty seven cents per thousand, which continues to be well below our projected rate of thirty seven cents per thousand as stated in the two thousand eight election materials. Now, this lower rate is due to a combination of the favorable uh market conditions at the time of the original issue as well as subsequent refinancing uh which reduced the total debt service amount to be paid by the district. And with that, we'll go to the next slide, which is our mitigation maintenance reserve fund. This one goes back a tab or two. I believe it is the other other funds, yes, other funds tab, so just one tab back. Now, several years ago, we received funds for mitigation work done on our sites to offset development impacts to wetlands and elsewhere. The revenues were set aside in this fund to be the source of fun of future maintenance work on these mitigation sites. While we are not receiving new revenue of this type, this fund houses the these these dollars that may still be needed for future maintenance. That, I'll turn it over to Aisha for all things capital.
You have a point for questions where I was planning to take that sip of water.
Sorry. Any any discussion on those two funds before I turn it over to Aisha? Jumping the gun again, again.
Ready, got the water. All right, so the capital projects, these are the general funded capital projects. Uh, the section in the budget book is at CP dash one, so it's under the capital projects tab towards the back of the book. And um this year, our proposed budget for capital is just over the eleven million dollars you see on the screen. It um contains a significant amount of about eight million dollars that is carry forward from the prior or the current fiscal year would be carried forward to next year. And it includes projects um we intend to complete like our fire life safety modernization project, um which was a two million dollar project itself. It also um will allow us to complete the garden home boiler replacement full project. Um, and then a small amount to close out that permanent restrooms project that you heard about because we can't stop talking about it. It was very exciting and it will be very exciting and I've already pitched the idea of a toilet paper ribbon cutting when we go. So I'm hoping that gets legs. Um, so those will be at our Schiffler Park, Hazeldale Park and Greenway Parks coming up. About four million dollars of the carry forward amount relates to grant funded projects such as our Phantom Creek Trail Crossing at Shoalsberry and Loop Path Trail Improvements within the park as well as the West Side Trail Bridge Design. Um, we do have some new grant projects that are just over about a million dollars that are included in that overall eleven million dollar total you see on the screen. This budget also includes uh several other projects that includes our asphalt pathway repairs, building repairs and air ADA barrier removals within our parks and our facilities. On the next slide, we'll get into some of those building improvements and replacements. Um, so this is the capital dollars that we use um to spend on existing structures that we need to do something with or rehab or replacement. Um, and these also include things like our um standard fitness equipment replacement um which we have on a schedule. We have the emergency repairs line item located in this as we've talked about before and both interior and exterior building repairs, so it can include roofs, things like that. Uh, on the next slide, you will see um the category that is generally our our parks and trails and improvements out there and those are generally surface repairs. We have a lot of asphalt across this district and so we have trails that have areas that slump where shoulders are degrading, where the surface just gets really rough and we need to replace. Um, we have tennis courts that unfortunately get cracks in them, so we need to go out and repair the cracks um and turn them into what you see in the upper right of the slide, which is a beautiful new surface. So that is generally what you'll find within the surface repairs and repaving category. On the next slide, we have the ADA improvements and our budget separates the fund into um facility access improvements and park access improvements. So on the left side, you'll see a couple of water fountains that um are not the best product in terms of ADA compliance. And in in the case on the top, you'll see that it's a it's in an area that it isn't going to be a comfortable place to access for a portion of the year. So we will work to um replace the equipment but also make improvements to that area so that it isn't in a puddle. Um, on the right side of the screen, you see an example of doorways. Um, and so we're making additions and changes to the doorways so that maybe we switch up instead of two doors with a with a post in between, we might have a larger door with larger side lights, so we're looking at the whole kind of storefront of these facilities and um removing any barriers that those might have for folks trying to get into our sites. So those are our ADA improvements. And on the next slide, we'll move into a different pot of funds and so this is uh another agency's bond. So the Metro Regional Government uh had a two thousand nineteen natural areas bond. And um there were, there was category in that fund that was broken out to local governments and so it was called local share and it was allocated to us based on our population served. So our allotment was over eight million dollars and our four projects that we've identified to date are the replacement of the Willow Creek Greenway Boardwalk, the uh Heckman Road Park, which is located up in the North Bethany area, uh replacement of two uh play structures with accessible nature play equipment um for two different parks. And then um I mentioned earlier, we got it grant funded. Um, it was for this Commonwealth Lake Park, so we um we were anticipating needing to use all the local share funding for that project. We've gotten some now additional funding which will leave more money in this category that we could allocate somewhere else or if there are cost overruns in one of these other projects, we can cover that cost. So that is um very exciting, so the picture there is, I believe, the we're um the bridge and we're over at Commonwealth Park. Next slide, please. So here we are with uh another fund, which is that system development charges fund, which, as I mentioned, was the one that is a restricted fund, cannot be used for operations, can only be used to increase capacity of the park and recreation system. So it can mean building improvements, it can mean facility uh updates that provide a new opportunity for recreation, but generally it's used for the development of new parks um or new trail alignments. So um in this category, we have a a large appropriation. Um, but we have a lot of that fund tied to acquisition, so those are opportunity based acquisitions. We also have undesignated funds because something really, really cool could come up that we don't even know about yet and we want to be able to act on that as long as it's consistent with all of our planning efforts. And um and then we do have a five year plan for spending SDC dollars based on our prioritization criteria. Uh, some of the projects that we anticipate moving forward with this coming year are those two trail projects, the Beaverton Creek Trail, our Abbey Creek Phase Two um construction project up in North Bethany. The Future Pointer Road Park has gotten through the concept planning effort and is moving into design and permitting. And then, of course, land acquisition as those opportunities um are become available and we have willing sellers. So the image you see on this screen is the phase two development of the Abbey Creek Park, which has a new feature that we haven't really incorporated before. Um, but based on kind of visioning and demographics, we'll have like a teen hang space in this park, so we're excited to see how that plays out. Next slide, please. Um, so we had the two thousand eight hundred million dollar capital bond and we're down to under two point five million dollars left, which is pretty exciting, so we have the final few projects to go. One of them is the Mountain View Champions Multipurpose Sport Court that um we are able to place on a piece of property that was purchased kind of late in the game when we were developing Mountain View Champions and so we were able to make great use of it and um expand the recreational offerings at that site by providing this um this sports court there. Uh, we also are working very hard to complete some stream improvements and daylighting of a stream over at Raleigh Park. And then we have the Bronson Creek Greenway at Laid Law Restoration was a large property that we purchased north of Finley Elementary. Um, that is going to provide great opportunities to do some restoration um of natural areas and the stream corridor there. That is bond capital. That concludes the the funding topics and we're happy to answer any questions you'd like to ask.
Yes, you go for a bond for capital that that bond can be used for capital replacement stuff potentially also, which could make it less user less of our other levy that will pass.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. And we potentially would go out for that bond, do we have a potential thought?
Yeah, we are, we are working to hone in on that, but Jared, I think, can share uh what the timeline could look like.
Find the right page.
Come on.
It's debt service four.
Let's check.
My gosh, debt service four. I'm sorry, I know this book too. Uh, um. This graph shows the remainder of, oh, sorry, near the near the very back of the book.
Oh, God.
Near, yeah. Almost, almost all were that debt service section, debt service, last page in the section. Yep, it's the, it's this one. There you go. So this graph shows our debt service payments for the remainder of our bonds. You can see a large drop in twenty eight and fiscal year twenty eight and then all of them paid off by fiscal year twenty thirty. There's several ways to approach a bond renewal. One of those being maintaining the debt service level. Keeping a steady debt service uh allows taxpayers to not see fluctuations in the amount that they're paying. Based on this graph, if we were to attempt to maintain that debt service level, we would want to almost have that two, the twenty twenty seven amount continue out straight. So we would sell additional bonds in that twenty seven, twenty eight fiscal year where that would increase the twenty eight bond uh obligation to be level. And then as we get to twenty thirty where all of these bonds are sold off, by then we would want to sell more bonds to be able to maintain that level. So that, doing that, in order to do that, we would need to go out for a levy. We would need a levy approved by the end of fiscal year twenty seven. So, but it doesn't have to be in twenty seven, it can happen before then.
Uh, yeah, if I get that too, I mean, the the reality is you you want to create maximum opportunity for a win. Thus, more than likely twenty six is the target year because you can. Yeah, Holly and I have had this discussion, I I almost promised her that I wouldn't talk about this until we're done with current operating levy, but uh but there's still a lot of detail to go through to set the stage for what might be under consideration, obviously, before the board at a future date.
Kind of a nerdy follow up to that, with uh interest rates being as high as they are right now, I mean, how do you bake in some flexibility if you're hoping that that's gonna come and granted, we have a couple of years, right, like hopefully.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, when do you lock in your rates there versus when you kind of get the hunting license to go and get, yeah?
Great question. Um, if if we had a crystal ball and could tell exactly when those rates would drop off or reduce down to more reasonable, you know, then we'd say, okay, let's fund this much to get us to that point and then we'd sell the rest. It's.
You've got arbitrage.
Yeah.
You've got some stuff to pay attention to.
Yes.
Along the way, uniquely, uh the opposite effect happened in two thousand eight. The rates were very favorable. We actually had uh, we had uh, I've forgotten the technical term, we we were a premium, yeah, we had premiums on the bonds we're signing, so we the board at that time were given, we we provided options for the board to consider and the and the board chose to lessen the number of years to the taxpayers. So it saved phenomenal interest to the taxpayers. And and we will be paying these bonds off, they were to be twenty year bonds, they will be seventeen year bonds. Yeah. Those, it's all about the timing.
Um.
I just want to add, when you think about when you'll time uh contemplating going out for a replacement bond, you also want to think about the timing with the levy renewal, so you'll want to put that into your calculations because we know we'll be going out at the five year part, so I think Doug is right on about twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, because you're gonna be thinking about when that levy renewal is. And then secondly, I just want to uplift the recommendation from the Levy Task Force and Elizabeth, you were on the task force and to your question about can the bond be used for capital replacement? Remember, we asked the Levy Task Force to give us three recommendations and they actually gave us four. So we asked for three recommendations around the levy, should we go yes or no? If so, how much should we ask for and when should we go? They answered those three questions and then they gave us a fourth. And what they said is, they supported the fifty cent levy ask, but they were not super excited about three million a year for capital replacement, they really wanted that number to be higher, but they understood the polling said that the community wouldn't support much more than fifty cents per thousand of assessed value and they really wanted us to flag and remember that we needed to prioritize and emphasize capital replacement in the next bond ask. And they felt that that was um important for the district to keep in mind and and sort of keep in their thinking as we as we were comfortable with the fifty cent levy rate that the next bond really has to emphasize capital replacement.
Because I would just piggyback on on Holly's statement and say um that was very much a strong undercurrent, there was a lot of discussion around system development charges and the district is very fortunate to have
Yeah.
healthy system development charges, but because those are going toward new, um, right, how do you maintain all of these new wonderful things? And when you look at, you know, a mile of trail is thirty three thousand dollars to maintain, right? It it just keeps getting more expensive and so if you don't have the right color of money to actually support the goals and the and the infrastructure, you're in a world of hurt and so that's, that's why that came up um so strongly from the task force.
That bond that we would go for, I mean, this is later discussion, is more for just replacement rather than because our other bond, our previous bond was like new development.
Well, it was, it was a mix.
Okay.
Uh, but but it was a lot of new, you you can uh with the the recommendation will be a blend um in the end.
Okay.
Leave it, please, no further discussion, we turn it back over to Elizabeth.
Thanks for the great discussion, everyone. Um. And it continues. Uh, under agenda item number ten, I will now open the floor to budget committee discussion regarding the district's proposed F R A uh twenty four, twenty five budget. You know, there's overarching comments, questions, observations.
It have a question. Um, so for the budget resource, that intergovernmental revenue, like that's a a lot of million, but so it's grants and intergovernmental revenue, is that just still just like like federal money that comes in or what's the inner inner governmental revenue? E one seven. So like goes from like which was heard originally, like four, it goes from like eight hundred or actually to like fourteen or thirteen million.
That, so. It's grants.
Okay.
It also includes the metro bond local share. So that eight million that's just in that fund alone is part of that.
Okay, yes, okay. Okay.
Question for me, I just got the 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 prospective registration system placement, is that? I was looking at C I P nineteen, but is that elsewhere? Am I exploring?
I draw, it's something very blind.
Oh, C I C, yes, it is in the communications. It is admin. Admin. Ah, found a mistake.
29, it's 29 listed.
29 as lot project number nine. And we forgot to include the information of project number nine on admin 31.
Okay, got it.
And this is just first phase of the project. Definitely not full cost. Much, much more of the debt, just unfortunately.
General comment about, thank you for walking us through this into good times. Unbelievable material. I just feel very privileged to live in this community and have this, you know, available for us. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Echo John's comments, I was joking over tortilla chips that I get excited when the budget fairy comes by to drop off the binder. It's like this magical thing that happens. And it just keeps getting better year after year, right? And I know this is this is going to sound so simple, but the pictures are fantastic, right? Like it adds so much, even if it's the picture of the boiler at Garden Home Rec Center, like it it really does convey the need there. And just everyone out enjoying the resources, right? All of those, the kids and community, I love it. And, you know, I can only imagine how much time and effort it takes to compile all of this. And it really is a team effort. And it 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 takes a lot to be able to commit it down to the page number. So just well, super impressive, yeah.
Well, rest assured as well, we have yet to lose one of these off of someone's front doorstep. Imagine the disappointment.
You're just pitching a vignette about the boilers that's going to come soon, tell the story.
There is a photo, but we've been talking about that for a while.
I feel serious.
Yeah. I have a TikTok coming.
Okay, I do have one other question. Sorry, so I'm looking at our the resources, right? And our recreation tennis revenue, swim center and like rental revenue, that's like, I know this is very simplified, but for me, that's like 12, like 12, 13 million. But then our recreation budget is like 30 something million. So it's like, yes, we have to compensate it, but has it ever been closer like to a one to one? Or has historically, not that, I don't know if you would know this, Jared, has it always been? We've always just had to supplement the recreation side.
Yeah, I think the fair question or fair response is yes, on on adopted budgets, but actuals is the percentiles you're looking at. That is the end result. But it leads to an interesting question because we'll have Aisha and perhaps Julie and Sabrina talk a little bit about the modeling that we're going to be looking at. Because it was, I've repeated the following a number of times. It was a reality that I think will be part of our transition is the COVID discussions during the first summer. And I remember being on national calls and we had, we had some very large organizations. And, you know, we're all, you know, concerned about, we're losing millions of dollars in revenue in the summer. And and finally, someone from Chicago speaks up and LA chimes in, it's like, well, we're we're not really reducing any of our programming. Like, what do you mean? How do you, how do you do that? He says, we don't charge for our programs in the summer. That's the way they model themselves.
Yeah, so there's, historically, all the centers have had a level of subsidy. So, you know, right now, you're seeing probably a higher percentage of subsidy because we have pulled back on the revenue targets. I think that we would have to go back historically to show you what that difference is. But that's because we've also seen our expenditures grow so much and it's things that we've been talking about just as a district, we've seen our costs go up, water costs, those things. So that's been part of the challenge is keeping up because so much of our cost is payroll and and also the utilities of providing water and heat to our facilities and things. So we've been, those things have been outpacing our ability to bring in the revenue. So we have, our revenues are still not at the same target. So it's been, it's like a compounded problem. But there's always been subsidy to all of our programs. So we have never, we've never had 100% cost recovery. There's been programs, like if you, we go back to that cost recovery pyramid, there's classes that have met cost recovery for those programs, but there's the facility that supports those programs. Those have always had a subsidy. So does that help kind of break it down a little bit?
We've increased our free programming, right? Our recmo bill, our adaptive and inclusion services, those aren't tied to a lot of revenue. So, you know, that that payroll that Sabrina is talking about, that's just an expenditure. And that's the service that we're choosing to provide to the community.
The next Budget Committee meeting date to consider approval of fiscal year 2425 budgets has been scheduled for Thursday, May 16th at 6:00 PM. With that, there being no further business this evening, the working session is adjourned.